Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome to the February 5th Pulse Falls City Council meeting. Shannon, we'll note that all council members are present, and we have a couple announcements to make tonight. First, I'd like to welcome Boy Scouts from Weebloos Pack 932 and 923, so thank you for joining us, gentlemen. I'd also like to welcome, we have a group of students from Pulse Falls High School, it was BPA, correct? So they're here for a project or a requirement, so welcome to you as well. City business offices will be closed on President's Day, Monday 18th. Garbage pickup schedule will not be affected by the President's Day holiday closures. Residents should put their garbage toders out for pickup on the regular day. And I want to share this message from John Beecham, our Public Works Director, and Paul Kenny, our Maintenance Manager. Coeur d'Alene has been a great partner as we've worked to reimagine our snow handling procedures. Generally, we have received a lot of information from many people in the Coeur d'Alene Streets Department, and I want to make sure the entire department is thanked. Specifically, I would like to thank Tim Martin. He has been helpful sharing information about their existing snow gates operations, and our thanks to Jack Reichart and Justin Kimberling. They came to Pulse Falls and provided in-person advice to our crew about technical and operational details of the snowgate equipment. Additionally, when we wanted to test salt brine as an alternative to magnesium chloride, Coeur d'Alene was willing to help both with advice and with providing brine to use in a pilot test. So I'd like to add my thanks to that of John and Paul's, thanking Coeur d'Alene Streets Department for their generous spirit of cooperation, not just the Streets Department but the city as a whole. And I know I did receive a phone call from Mayor Widmire, and he passed on an email that he had received from his staff saying that they were in fact going to be assisting City of Pulse Falls, and Steve was in complete support of that, so they're a good partner and a good neighbor. And I want to congratulate our city engineer, Bill Melvin. Bill was named the 2019 Engineer of Merit by the American Society of Civic Engineers, Inland Empire Section at their annual banquet in Spokane. Bill was selected from 500 engineers in the Pacific Northwest Region. The Engineer of Merit is awarded to an individual who has substantially contributed to the status of the civil engineering profession through a distinguished career in civil engineering. The only problem I have when they say distinguished career, that makes you sound old, Bill. During his career, Bill has been involved with area projects that included the Spokane Veterans Memorial Arena, Spokane International Airport, Spokane Centennial Trail, and the Coeur d'Alene Resort 14th Hole Floating Green. Now we know who to blame. During his 23 years as city engineer, the city grew from 5,000 to over 37,000. During that growth, his involvement in city projects included planning for infrastructure and transportation needs to 2035, the development of over 250 subdivisions, more than 100 miles of roadway and sewer extension, lift stations, traffic signals, and roundabouts, freeway interchanges, and the overpass, to name a few. Congratulations, Bill. We appreciate your hard work and dedication to the city of Pulse Falls. It's an award well deserved. Do we have any amendments to the agenda? We do, as I recall.
We do, under item number three, unfinished business, so we would like to remove item A, Declaration of Intent to Sell Real Property Located at 310 North Spokane Street, and that item will come back with further information from staff.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhun?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item up, or I guess the question is, are there any declarations of conflict? Council, Wilhun?
I will recuse myself from new business items D and E.
Thank you very much. That, would you please present the consent calendar, shall they?
Item A is minutes, the January 15th, 2019 City Council meeting. Item B is payables, January 8th through January 28th, 2019. Item C is contract with Stratton Land Services Incorporated for survey work. Item D is Werber Estates, formerly known as Cecil Estates subdivision plat application. Item E is master development agreement for the Villa Point North subdivision. Item F is purchase of two turf sweepers from Turf Star Western by the Parks Department. Item G is request by the police and Parks Departments to dispose of miscellaneous computers and equipment. Item H is purchase of a Toro 5900 wide area mower by the Parks Department. And item I is agreement with Pier 20 and 21 Homeowners Association for Property Transfer.
Any questions on the consent calendar?
I have two.
Greatly.
Item H, the quote come in at 79.3 for the mower, and it was with the condition that we were trading in another mower and a sweeper, and so I was questioning whether the quote was still good at this point. And then, secondly, if it is good, what's the outcome of the mowers going to the cemetery as the staff report, but what's the outcome of the sweeper?
Okay. Thanks for that question and the point of clarification there. Apologize for having the mix-up on the quote being provided in the council packet there. The mower will be transferred up to the cemetery as it was described in the memo. The quote is still good for the purchase price that was listed on the quote for the individual unit. We just see the life expectancy of that mower, we can salvage a little more life out of it and efficiently manage that new cemetery expansion, so we pulled that piece back.
Okay.
And then on the sweepers, I believe one of those sweepers has already been surplused in a previous council meeting. I'll have to do a little research to ensure that's true, but the disposal of those will come on a subsequent meeting. The plan is to trade one of those in or sell it at auction. We haven't yet decided which way is the best approach to get our money out of those facilities. Basically, at this point, the life of those, they're really, the value's in scrap metal. That's about all we're going to get for them. One of the two sweepers, City Coeur d'Alene is still operating one of those machines, and as we've already said to date, we've got a great relationship with them. We likely will ask to transfer that unit over to City Coeur d'Alene so they can salvage it for some parts. There's just not much value there, even in scrap.
You okay?
Okay, yeah, I'm good with that.
Good. Any other questions?
Item I, our staff memo states that the survey costs are estimated at $13,000, and then the memorandum of agreement states that they're estimated at $11,000. So I'm wondering if there's something missing in the MOA, or what's, where the $2,000 difference comes from?
The survey costs that are in item C are actually for work down on the Espinade and the public, so they're not for this agreement with the homeowners association.
Two separate items?
Two separate items.
But there is a survey fee associated with the homeowners association as well.
And Warren's not here, I didn't handle that section, so I can't answer that. I'm assuming that will be coming back to you. The survey work that we have here in the contract is to get us a legal description for the public space in the Espinade. That will be coming before you later on.
So then you've got a question on the surveying for the item I, correct?
Well, it's on item I, and there is a memorandum of agreement that states that they would pay back $11,000, or estimated cost of $11,000, and both of them are listed as estimated costs.
Right.
So, so under the MOA, on number two, showing $11,000, and under our staff memo, we're saying $13,000.
Okay, and unfortunately, I can't answer that. Shelley, did you and Warren have conversations, or I don't have that document in front of me either.
I see that.
I'd say everything I saw said $13,000, so where is the $11,000, I guess?
It's under the memorandum of agreement, number two.
Yeah, I can't answer why there's a difference between the 11 and the 13 that's listed in the memo.
It's safe to assume, though, that it would most likely not go over that 13?
I would say, since the MOU actually says 11, that's the number I would approve it at, if you guys want to, in your approval, approve it for the lower number, because that's the agreement that we have with the homeowners association, is 11,000.
Yeah, and that was my concern, is if it goes over that, are we going to get reimbursed for the additional funds?
The city will promptly reimburse the HOA for its surveying costs associated, so if we go with the 11,000.
I'd say we're reimbursing them, they're not reimbursing us.
So if it went over, we would be limited to the 11,000.
Got it.
Is that right?
Yep.
And it would have to come back to council if it's a higher amount.
I'm good with that.
So do we need to make any changes to get that approved in the consent calendar since there are the two amounts?
I think you should clarify in the motion that the 11,000 is the number being approved.
Okay. Does that work for everybody? You're okay with that, Lynn?
Yep.
Thank you for bringing that up. I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar as presented, adding that item I, the governing document will be the memorandum of understanding with reimbursement of $11,000.
Second. Motion second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Wilhun?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. And I'd like to record to show that I did not vote on that. I have dealt, I've talked with Mr. Wilson, it's not a conflict of interest. I'm dealing with some of the homeowners on that, the homeowner's down at the pier, but it has nothing to do with this property transfer, but I just want to make sure that the record shows that I did not vote on that. Get back up to the agenda. Tonight, we have no public hearings. We have postponed the, or removed the unfinished business of the intent to sell real property. So now we're down to new business. No, we're not, we're down to citizens issue, and this section of the agenda is open to any citizen wishing to address the council on a non-agenda item. If anyone wishes to address council, please come forward, give your name for the record, and we'll allow you five minutes to do so. Seeing none, new business. First item is the I-90 Highway 41 interchange update. And guests.
Yes. Mayor Council, you'll recognize Shannon Stein and Jake Menard, who had been before us on the Highway 41 interchange revisions. We'd had a workshop and also presentation to Mayor Council. Since then, they've had public involvement process and have gone through a little bit more of technical analysis. They've taken into account the public's comments and have done some further review on the project. We now have a selected preferred alternative interchange that they're going to move forward. We have asked them to come before council and present that interchange to you. There's really no action tonight, we're just more getting the information to you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll turn it over to Shannon and Jake.
And would you give us your name for the record, please, as you begin?
Yes, Shannon Stein, Mayor and Council. So just to recap, kind of where we're at, started development on this project in spring, completed our conceptual design in summer of 2008. Late fall, we hosted a week-long value engineering session, at which point, you know, I came and I presented to council some of the rough napkin level sketches that we had at that point. November 8th, we had a public meeting on our top two alternatives that came out of the value engineering session. And then ongoing, starting even before that meeting and continuing through the rest of the project, we've had, you know, a response to the public and property owner contacts, kind of where we're at now. We're going to move into preliminary design and further development. Late summer or early fall, we plan on hosting a public hearing, once we get to about 60% design, give or take, have our design phase completed and ready for advertisement summer 2020, and then construction is 2023. So as I said earlier, we hosted a public meeting November 8th. We had 214 participants, and we showed two alternatives at the public meeting. The first is the single-point urban interchange, shown on the board, and the second we showed was the half-diamond interchange south of I-90. And the key themes that we heard from members of the public at the meeting and from our property stakeholder involvement before, were that future growth, traffic flow, and safety were key themes. Participants supported both concepts, but due to cost, they favored the half-diamond. The half-diamond has estimated about half the cost of the single point. There were quite a few concerns expressed over in the half-diamond, the fact that the loop ramp was retained, concerns with the safety, even with the upgraded geometry and deceleration length, that there would still be an issue with crashes there. Not concerning the cost, most people preferred the layout and operations of the spooey, so, you know, it was kind of a practical consideration. People liked the half-diamond, but liked the idea of the spooey a lot better. And then we heard a lot of concerns regarding our proposed impacts on Seltice, so both of these options proposed to realign the Seltice, shift it to the north, bring it up and over 41, and then bring 41 down through a loop to connect back in to the local system. And we heard quite a bit of concerns regarding, you know, the out-direction travel and the significant property impact south of Seltice.
Good evening, I'm Jake Menard from David Evans Associates, the consultant project manager working on the design of the project. So I'm going to talk about kind of where we're headed with the process, with the project coming out of the public meeting, and I think it's really kind of a success story in how the public process can really help guide solutions, and I think that's really what happened on this project. So as my team, along with Shannon, evaluated all the public input, we kind of looked at and said, you know, can we somehow combine the benefits of both of these concepts we showed at the public meeting, and incorporate the concerns and also ideas and what they liked and disliked about both concepts into one concept? And I truly believe we successfully did in this new concept that we're ultimately moving forward with. So this here is called an offset single-point urban interchange, and it's very similar to the single-point urban interchange that we showed previously. The main difference is, we basically take the intersection and shift it to the north, and that reduces the, avoids the need for all the work that we were proposing south of Seltice. It avoids the Seltice realignment and overpass that we were proposing in both concepts previously, dramatically reducing impacts to businesses and property owners along Seltice and south of Seltice, while maintaining all the benefits that we had with that single-point urban interchange that we heard from so many folks. They liked the layout and the simplicity of it. So really, kind of is a win-win scenario, where I think we really found that sweet spot, I think, of, you know, traffic operations, safety improvement, and the other big benefit here is this now is more cost competitive with the half-diamond, which we're kind of leaning towards just from a cost standpoint, but with a lot of additional benefits. The traffic operations are similar. We, I think, one of the things we're going to be working heavily with the city, Bill and Paul, on is how this impacts the local system, the local City of Pulse Falls road system. We've done some preliminary traffic analyses, and so far, we haven't found any fatal flaws with negative impacts to traffic, but we're going to continue to work on it. In fact, what we're seeing so far in our preliminary investigations, it's actually a significant benefit versus the no-build option. And so I think an important theme to take away for the mayor and the council is that really this option isn't really a new option, this is just something that we developed in response to public comment and property owner meetings that we've had, and really is basically incorporating all that into what you see here. So I think that's all we had.
Question for you.
Yes.
So you've moved the intersection to the north?
Yes.
And one of the topics that has been discussed is with the improvement of Highway 41, that small piece from Mullen south of Seltice had really not been addressed, and I know when we heard from you before, that was going to be addressed during this project. Is that still the case?
Yeah, so the improvements necessary, we'll vet out through this. We're probably going to program it as a separate project number, but it'll follow right behind this project. But we are doing all the traffic modeling to make sure that we have a clear path forward.
Good, thank you. Any other questions? Great, thank you. Appreciate your ability to take the input and come back with a plan that hopefully addresses most, if not all, those concerns. Thanks for your work on it. Next item up is the Second Amendment to Intergovernmental Agreement with Rathram for Discharge of Wastewater. Mr. Beecham?
I have far less fun pictures than the last presentation. John Beecham, Public Works Director, and here to present an amendment to our existing contract with the City of Rathram for wastewater treatment. Quick background on the contract, the original contract was signed in 1996, replaced some previous agreements that were a little bit looser than this agreement, and became the formal document that allows us to receive wastewater from Rathram and treat it on their behalf. And in 2009, the first and only amendment to that agreement was signed. So as you can see, this has held up pretty well as far as an agreement with need for amendments. As further background, we received our 2014 wastewater discharge permit from the EPA, allowing us to continue operation of the water reclamation facility. And a component of that permit was to develop and implement our own industrial pretreatment program. Currently, that program is administered by the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, and we're required to take on that, the administration of that program as part of our permit. So industrial pretreatment, as the EPA defines it, is a long definition, but it's basically regulating what industries are allowed to discharge into our sewer system to protect the sewer itself, and then to make sure that we can treat whatever comes into it and deliver clean water to the river. Our existing agreement actually addresses most items that would fall into this. Requirements that we place on our system are required to be mirrored in Rathram's system, for example, and it provides for interaction and assistance between the cities on administering those programs. But it is missing some of the required authorization language and implementation language for us to actually be the legal entity enforcing the rules of the program. As I mentioned, it's currently administered by IDEQ, so our authority is basically to tell IDEQ if somebody isn't following the rules. If we're going to take on that responsibility, there are certain contractual things we have to have with the City of Rathram to make sure we have the authority to do that. And in short, this amendment delivers those specific interaction tools to where Rathram can administer a program in their city, we can administer the same program in our city. One thing this allows is for the City of Rathram to issue permits directly to their industrial users, if they have those. We think this is an important way to handle it. It sort of puts the ownership of their system on their city staff, rather than have us administer rules in the City of Rathram. There are some additional provisions for inspection, for access to look at things, make sure they're happening properly, and in general, there's a lot of logistics that EPA and IDEQ wanted to see solidified in a contract. To speak to the broader picture of taking over that program, this amendment is the first of several things we'll bring before you. The next thing would be an update to our sewer use ordinance, and the changes that we're looking at making are not drastic, but they are reflecting that we would be the enforcement authority instead of EPA and IDEQ. Following that, we submit the whole package to IDEQ. They require that we have adopted all these things before we submit it, which is a little bit of an awkward approval process, so we've been working with IDEQ to make sure that it's at least 99% right when we send it in, rather than get it all approved and have comments come up. However, there is a public comment period that IDEQ is required to go through before they can delegate the authority to us. So some things may come up in that public comment period, which would result in a modification of the program. Assuming that all goes smoothly, late this year, we would be delegated program authority and begin to implement the program on our own. With that, are there any questions?
I have a question for you, John. So you stated this will allow Rathram to now issue permits for pretreatment to their industrial users?
Yes.
Do they have to adhere to the same policy requirements program that we do? My concern is, you know, if they by chance were to issue a permit that doesn't meet our standards, who's responsible?
The short answer is, they would be required to issue a permit that looks almost identical to one we would issue. So we have generically rules about what's allowed to be even included in those permits, and IDEQ and EPA have similar rules about how often sampling occurs and that sort of thing. The permits are basically written to the federal rules and any local limits that we establish within our own city. Within, with those local limits, Rathram is required to adopt the same local limits for their users.
So if we act as the enforcement side of that now, do we have the authority to remedy any situation that may occur if it's not done properly?
I don't have a specific location in the contract, but yes, if it's not being done properly, we have the authority to either see that it is or take it to IDEQ for them to do the same.
Okay, good. Steve?
John, you stated that the City of Rathram then would be issuing the permits. Would they submit them then to our staff for review for any comments on them before the permit was finalized then?
I don't know that if, that we have that specifically in the language of this. I assume we would work together on developing a permit like that. I'm not sure if there's a prescriptive submit to us with 30 days' notice, I don't think that's in this contract.
Yeah, the only thing I was thinking of, if you noticed there was an issue, it'd be easier to catch it during the permit process and going back later once they issued it, so.
Any comments? No.
John, I have a question, it's a little bit outside the scope of this contract, but any discussion about when Rathram will have their own wastewater treatment plant?
I believe the reason that this contract exists is that they do not have a plan to have their own wastewater treatment plant. This is sort of a way to allow things to continue into the future without building that plant.
Okay, thank you.
I should say, I don't speak for the City of Rathram, that's, I'm just not aware of any plans, I make sure I put that disclaimer on there.
You'll be quoted.
Thank you, and we do need action on this tonight?
I'd move to approve the Second Amendment to Intergovernmental Agreement with Rathram for Discharge of Wastewater.
Second.
Motion seconds, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhun?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next, thanks, John. Next item up is the Pulse Falls Lion Club Recycling Program Memorandum of Understanding.
Good evening, Mayor Council. I have even fewer pretty pictures for you. This project is one that we've been working close to a year to bring to you, and excited to get this launched into the coming season for the parks. The Lions Club wrote a grant to provide recycling receptacles and the service that goes along with it, and we worked together to try to come up with a plan for what that would look like in the parks facilities. The grant consists of 20 bins that they were awarded that will be placed throughout the, throughout park facilities. They will be collecting aluminum, plastic, and glass in those facilities, sorting those things, and then providing those to a recycler, and then the club itself will be keeping the revenue associated with that. Currently, within the parks, we estimate that about 13,000 cubic yards of this type of material is currently deposited in our trash receptacles, some into recycling bins. We're a little limited on that program currently. This was an opportunity for us to expand into that area. This was an opportunity for us to expand into that area. The bins that we do have out and about basically use sheriff's labor program to sort those bins, and it's pretty staff-intensive, even though it's sheriff's labor, to try to oversee those workers sorting those materials and then taking them to recycle and that sort of thing. So this is an opportunity to enhance that and offset that.
Brian, a question for you. Does Post Falls Sanitation not provide services to our parks with the recycling?
We do not have services of that nature within the parks.
Good. I have a quick question. I know in the past, Brian, there's really not been a market for recycled glass, so I'm assuming they've found somebody that's willing to take that.
I don't know the details on what they have in mind there, but it's...
I know that's been an issue, that there's a lot of glass, but they haven't just found anybody that's really wanted it for recycling, so, okay.
City of Athol had a program, I don't know if it's still going on, but they had found a way to use glass, but don't know if they're still doing it. Any questions? Thanks, Brian. We do need action on this tonight.
I'd move that we accept the Post Falls Lions Club Recycling Program Memorandum of Understanding.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Malloy.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Borders.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Thorson.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item up is the purchase and sale agreement with Liberty Bankers for property in the Post Falls Landing Esplanade. Mr. Fair.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'll try and have some pretty pictures. So the next two items actually kind of will mingle in together, so they're tied together. So what we have first is a purchase of additional property, 8.8 acres of land. What we're talking about is this section right in here along the slough, Falls Park, so it's kind of that general area. The item in blue is what was designated with the original concept for that and part of that development plan with, that would have been Harry Green and his development. The yellow is what we anticipate with the new design that was put forward with work with the Vista. That is the concept of what we would have as a finished product with the Vista agreement. So it's adding about two-thirds to the size of that public space. Right in here, that's pretty much the existing design that was set forward, reinforced, straightened out, and then in here would be the crane pad area that utilizes. So it's going to, it's a beautiful space that's functional. The terms of the purchase agreement that we're asking for the council to approve and mayor to sign is the purchase of an additional 8.8 acres. It's a purchase price of $305,000.
Purchase 8.8 or .8?
.88, sorry. I need more coffee. Purchase price of $305,000. In my memo, it was listed for purchase price of $305,000. Closing costs will be determined. Title insurance is about $2,000, and then $10,000 for the survey work. That's $317,000 plus closing, so we figure about $330,000, not the 464 listed. It just makes it look better. We also are agreeing to do construction of the stairs from that plaza area, try to come back in this area here up to Third Avenue, but that will happen when the site gets developed. We don't want to put in stairs and then find out that we've just limited a spot where a building wants to go or have any of that, but that is one of the terms on the sale. And then we're waiving the obligation for development of that public space by the developer. What we end up with, the desired outcome would be a space that is actually usable to the public, makes it much more inviting. We want to draw people down to the space, and hopefully that will spark some commercial development, and then just a higher level of development, so. The steps in the purchase process for, I guess, our safety in it, we do have to put $10,000 down as a deposit. It's nonrefundable. We have an inspection period of 90 days. In our agreement with the Vista, they are doing all the geo-testing right now, which is for structural soils and for any of the hazard soils. At the end of that 90-day period, or when the Vista tells us that, yes, it will work, we put in additional $25,000 deposit down, and then we'd be looking at a closing by May 1st.
And the Vista is footing the bill for the soil testing?
Yes, they are. Thank you. So I'm open for any questions.
Questions to Dave?
There's a lot of moving pieces on this one.
So Dave, we're on the hook for 10 grand whether that property turns out to be okay for Vista or not.
That is correct. And as we went through negotiations, as we went through a lot of meetings, it's the only way to make it work, and we felt it was worth the risk.
Okay. Other questions? You may have answered this, Dave, but when does Vista anticipate having the testing done?
This, it was supposed to be this week. I think it's starting on Friday, and we'll go into next week. They're moving pretty fast on it. They figure, I think it was, the last memo was two to three days of actual testing in there, and then they'll go to the labs and they'll be working on that. They want to have an answer fairly quickly back to us.
Okay.
So we...
Any other questions? We do need a motion on this.
Move to approve the purchase and sale agreement with Liberty Bankers for property in the Post Falls Landings Esplanade for a public park.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Anthony.
Aye.
Borders.
Aye.
Thorson.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item up, again, on the esplanade, the agreement with the Vista for the development.
Another pretty picture.
Looks the same.
It is. This is asking for council vote to enter into agreement with the Vista MOU for development of the esplanade, recognizing the requirements that we just talked about on our purchase of it. Our portion in this partnership is obtaining the land, and then they would be coming in and doing the construction design work and the construction.
My only question would be whether or not we could get them to partner on other parks so that can...
I guess, Dave, what would the timeline be on this then?
The original, they were talking about wanting to have it done 2020. I would not be surprised if we end up in 2021. It just really, it's going to depend on when they get in there, they find out what kind of structural soils. If they have to go back in on that retaining wall and pull it out and rebuild it, that will probably take a little bit longer. And then, of course, they're working with when the water drawdown is, so that will play a part.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Move to approve the agreement with the Vista for development of the esplanade.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Rule call, please.
Borders.
Aye.
Thorson.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Next up is Live After Five Weekly Concert Series Agreement for Tolemore Park.
Again, thank you, Council, Mayor. This contract before you tonight is a proposal by a local vendor to utilize one of our parks facilities for a weekly summer concert series. The proposal at its onset, and the first season would consist of eight weekly summer concerts on Thursday evenings in Tolemore Park and the new amphitheater that we've just recently completed with the development of that park. Within our 2012 Park and Rock Master Plan, we identified that the community desired to have additional community gathering spaces that would accommodate this sort of, this sort of activity. And this is a way to begin to activate that new space that was just recently created and begin to test the appetite of our community for this sort of activity. The contract before you represents a three-year exclusive right for the contractor to execute their program with an option for first right of refusal for an additional three-year extension, taking it through 2024. They would provide a fee of $500 for the facility and our inflatables or star stage band shell, just the covering, because their existing infrastructure doesn't, won't accommodate on the site. They can't pull their trailer that they use at other facilities into the facility because we have that elevated retaining wall staged location, dislocation. The other item that I need to mention is we, in the shuffling of this contract, we had a number of revisions that went through, and the published contract was a slightly outdated version. It doesn't represent the terms that we've agreed to, so I'll outline those so that you're aware of those things. We'll publish those in a subsequent agenda, should you meet this as an approved item as an addendum. So Section 1 basically defined that the parks will provide some portable toilets on the north end of the park that we were planning on having at that facility anyway, just outlines that we'll provide a baseline, and then they'd provide an excess of those if their, if their uses need that accommodation. Section 3, it allows them to expand their concert series up to 12 weeks, should this be successful, and they want to expand that in the future years. Section 9, it changes the total number of food and beverage vendors from nine to 12, consistent with what our early discussions were, just a slip of the pen, more or less, and a total of, total number of vendors up to 30. A large number of their vendors have small displays and that sort of thing, but we refined some of the language to accommodate the use of their facility, consistent with what their needs were and what the facility can accommodate. Section 14 describes our pre-event meeting, and the change there is that we'd meet 45 days in advance of the meeting instead of 60. And then Section 15 strikes the language paid entry, basically allowing for only, the only weekly summer concert series, regardless of whether it's paid or free. They don't want to have another facility coming in on a weekly basis. It doesn't omit our ability to run a monthly concert series in the park, either internally or another vendor come in and operate that, in that way, or one-off type events. We can do those sorts of things. We can have our grand opening that may or may not consist of a concert, that sort of thing, within the park. And then it also described a little more further how, how we can program the facility outside of their, their reserved use area. So it described their, the area that's included within their reservation. And then Section 16, we had some additional description of our obligation, should we have to cancel one of these events for reasons unseen, that we would have to provide them with documentation within 14 days so that they can apply for their insurance coverage and that sort of thing. So with that, stand for questions on the event?
So if we approve this tonight, you've made some changes. Do we need to bring those back or to approve this subject to those changes being made?
Yes, we will bring the updated contract in the next council agenda so it's published as either addendum or as a sole contract that looks separate, without warrant here today when we discovered these, this shortfall. I wouldn't know which way we'd actually move on that, but what we're up against is the contractor on this. He's about to head out of the country to Turkey for a period of time, and would like to get this locked down so he can begin to recruit bands and his vendors and that sort of thing if it's met with the council's approval.
Steve, you have a question?
Yeah, Brian, and I think it's a great idea, the concerts in the park series. One concern I have, though, is the decibel level, since that park is in a mainly in a neighborhood. And you explained a little bit to me that we do not have an ordinance that specifies decibel level. Is there something in the contract that we could put with the sponsor that we might have to at some point put in a decibel level? And the second question was, who will be monitoring that will be Post Falls city staff that will actually have the decibel level to make sure the bands are playing at that level? Because they, most bands don't want to play as loud as they can.
Sure. Yeah, so within the contract, we did address those needs because we don't have that ordinance that overarches the citywide for noise. We have construction noise within our city ordinance, but nothing related to this sort of activity. We referenced some other agencies that have similar activities going on, and it ranges to community need. I've seen upwards of 100 decibels allowable at the soundboard, 95 decibels at the property line. So there's a big, long range of, really, the appetite for the community and that sort of thing. So we tried to fit something that we believe will fit with the site as best as we can. It's also consistent with the language we have with our grand pavilion reservations. So we have a nexus for a similar residential adjoining commercial neighborhood where we limit the sound at the distant property line at 85 decibels. So we've tried to put that sort of thing in there. Within the sound monitoring, that would be on city staff's responsibility to monitor those, those measurements, both at the, at the PA and also at the property line, and we'll do that periodically throughout the event.
Okay, thank you.
Josh Thorson.
I have a question on number five on the large ticketed event.
Yes.
4,000 people?
Number 11.
Up to 4,000 people as a part of the event, so it'd be extended out into the park, not necessarily just the one amphitheater for that one ticketed event. We'd have to outline those. He doesn't plan on doing that for this first year, but it would be an option for future years. And then we'd have an additional park impact fee that we'd be receiving for that sort of an event.
Parking could be accommodated?
That's, that's something we've asked them to consider if they're going to bring that sort of a proposal to us. Additional off-site parking allocation, that sort of thing with adjoining property owners.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Wolf.
Brian, I like the idea of having stuff going on in the park as well. I guess I do have some concerns about the noise level, like Counselor Anthony brought up, and the impact to the, to the park itself, because I've seen Camelan after Post Falls days with all the traffic in there. I'm wondering if it wouldn't be a better idea to do this on a one-year basis, to then go back and reassess it versus signing up for three years and then having to deal with some real negative impacts, but yet we're stuck.
Right. On that, this facility we've set up to accommodate these sorts of events quite well. It is a young park. There will definitely be impacts that we'll have to offset through maintenance practices, increased fertilization, that sort of thing, irrigation. Without a doubt, we'll have to manage that sort of reality. The one-year agreement would definitely be a deal breaker for this because they want to have some surety that they're building their marketplace from a business standpoint. And we've worked with them to try to come up with something that's agreeable to be able to make that work. We are testing out a new facility. We don't know exactly how it will respond, but we do believe we've built a facility that can accommodate this sort of activity. And we put the infrastructure in to not have the same impacts we do down at Camelan. We're talking about a one-day event versus a three-day event. Camelan, to be able to prep for that event, to set up our stage infrastructure and those sorts of dynamics and bring in the vendors, we have to shut down that irrigation system for the entire week. And that's a large percentage of what you're seeing for that ongoing impact, where this event is going to be shutting down from Wednesday morning, or sorry, Thursday morning on through the evening. We won't have that sort of ongoing drought stress that, in the heat of the summer, that will be lasting throughout the season. that will be lasting throughout the season.
I guess I understand the, the desire for the contractor to have that surety, but I guess I want that same surety on our side, that they're not going to have a negative impact that we're, we're stuck with. I, I think there's a way to offer a first right of refusal to them so they know that we're not going to go on to somebody else, but if they start trashing our park or bothering our citizens, I want to be able to say, you know what, we gave it a shot, we thought it would work, but it didn't, rather than say, no, we got to put up with it for the next two years just because we thought it would work.
But if they're trashing the park, then under the contract, we can't end the agreement as.
Correct.
And it is covered in item number 10 in the contract, as far as they have to have the park returned to the state that it was in by 10:30 that evening. So, I mean, it's not allowing them to go past that one day, as I read the contract.
Okay. Any other questions? So are we going to vote on this contract? Or are we going to wait until you bring back a different contract?
The concept as it stands right now would be, vote on the contract as it stands now and we will present an addendum as a part of the consent agenda at the next council meeting.
Can we prove it conditioned on bringing that back?
I think we can just bring it back to the consent calendar, but I'm not sure with. I know there's a need to have something approved because of timing.
I think what we're, we're looking for right now is for general consensus for us. The concept that was brought forward to you, we'll relay that to contractor and that this contract with corrections would be brought back at the, on next council meeting consent agenda.
Does it work for everybody? Joe, I have a question.
How much discussion has there been with the adjoining property owners, neighborhood, et cetera? And if any, what's the feedback been?
We haven't had any related to this individual event. That would have happened through the Park and Rec, the, the park site master plan and where we are including the amphitheater as a part of that overall site concept and the programming elements that were being included in that park. That's when that would have happened.
Nobody in the neighborhood's been even made aware that there's a, a weekly concert series potentially going on there for the next three years?
Not by city staff. My understanding is the contractor has made some of those touch points to try to, try to get the appetite for what that feedback would be. I don't know what, to what level those efforts have been sustained.
So you've gotten zero data points?
If I could add to that, when we did the, the public outreach on the design of the park, that was one of the things that we heard back from the residents is they wanted the concerts and the entertainment at that. That's why you have an amphitheater that we spent a lot of money building. Does that mean that all those residents that have come in since we started this project, they haven't, you know, voiced an opinion on that, but the designs were out there. It's very evident that there's a amphitheater.
Can I ask a question? Chief? Do you have, do you have any input, one way or another, on how this might impact of streets, parking, littering, dogs and cats living together?
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, you know, you look at the, the cities that host these, as in Boise and Coeur d'Alene, they do, they do host them in downtown areas and I haven't seen a whole lot of residential input. There are a couple of concerns. On my point, I was out of town, I think, when they had the meeting. Lieutenant Brannan went and sat in my place, but some of the concerns you're going to deal with, we're, we're going to get calls on, there's no doubt about it, will be the parking. We'll deal with some of those things. You're going to, we've got a couple of ordinance issues. You know, you've got a, a noise complaint issue that we're going to be dealing with, not only state statute, but you could be dealing with disturbing the peace call. So we take them now and we have, as you know, the concerts that go on throughout the city now, where they house them out at, out west, we, we deal with those calls as well. I like the fact of, of the idea. I certainly would entertain bringing this live after five here. I do like what it, what it has to offer. But when it comes to, I think that dealing with the residents up there, we need to, I don't know if we go door-to-door and talk to some folks that'll know what's coming or what, what, what that aspect would look like. But will we receive calls? I think, I think we will. Then we'll deal with them as they come in.
You think $500 a week is enough to offset the department's costs that's going to be associated with all these calls?
That's a good question. And I don't, I don't know the answer to that, to be honest with you. Without reaching out to some of the cities who maybe house these in, in public parks, without talking to them, I wouldn't know that. I don't know, I do know that the, I think the live after five in Coeur d'Alene is held down at McEwen, and I think that the residents are down there on Front Street and the, at the backside there, I think it's 11th or something like that. But I, I don't know what type of effects that police department's having, but I could certainly reach out to Chief White and ask him.
I'd be curious to know.
Yeah.
And Chief, Majestic and Rathrum, I know they do concerts there and that's right in within the residential area, so maybe that would be a good contact also.
Reach out to the chief up there as well. I could certainly do that.
Good. Appreciate that.
Well, I, I do believe the whole point, because it's on a school night, except it's the summer, but it's on a weeknight. And I believe, what time do, do they end?
Eight thirty.
Nine.
Eight thirty, according to the contract.
Yeah.
We'll end no later than eight.
And so that should eliminate some of that, Joe? You know, in the summertime, people are still out in their backyard, around the front porch at that time of night.
Yes, and again, I'll, I'll reach out to some of our local contacts and see what, any, any kind of things they're having. Give us some insight on that.
Mr. Wolf?
Appreciate it.
Last question. Seems to me like Live Five charges an admission fee, so will they be charging an admission fee?
They will be charging an admission fee for this event. Their plan for the current fiscal, fiscal year would be a $5 entry fee for their event. And then they have security measures in place for their beer and wine access, a security tent that provides access to those sorts of things, and then they'll be charging fees for the products that are available, either through food, food vendors that'll be set up on-site or the alcohol vendors that'll be set up on-site.
And they have to pay the entertainment.
Well, and then the residents could just sit on their front porches and hear the concert for free. There you go.
And Brian, in reading through, for the alcohol, they'd have to get the catering permit to the city then, right on that to be approved? So they'd have to be an approved vendor on that.
Yeah. So the option would be to, from what Mr. Ferr said, approve, or authorize staff to move forward by consensus and then bring back the contract at the next meeting with all the changes? Does that work for you gentlemen?
It works. Yeah. It works.
So I didn't take a motion.
I don't know if, I guess we can wait for discussion, but I don't, I don't know if it serves the purpose. I mean, I know the, the developer or the, the proponent is going to be in Turkey, although I assume that they still have email and things like that over there. I personally feel like we're jumping into this a little bit without enough information to make me feel comfortable with it. Is it good enough that we give a consensus that we approve of the concept, but need a few more details? Or does that not serve the purpose?
The, the challenge with that is until they have an agreement, they can't move forward with advertising the use of a public park because they don't have authorization to advertise in that way. As soon as you just begin to advertise a space, now we're starting to move into that commercial use of public property clause that isn't allowable with them, within our code. So that's, that's one of the hangups, is they, they have to move on with the planning and, and move forward. I don't know if two weeks is enough to slow that down on that, on that piece for them or not.
I guess my concern is that if, if the $500 a week is going to be enough to cover all the expenses that are going to be incurred by the Parks Department for whatever maintenance may need to still be done and measuring decibel levels and so forth, and the Police Department dealing with parking calls and noise complaints and so forth, then we end up subsidizing somebody's business venture, which I don't think we're in the business to do. So I, I don't feel like $500 is probably enough because you can burn through that awfully quick. So that's my reservation on it.
Mayor and Council, briefly, briefly here. Lieutenant Brannan has reached out to Coeur d'Alene City and had a conversation with them shortly after the meeting they had here at the city. And his response was they had zero issues with it, zero calls with it. Sounds like they hired their own security down there and their own staff to handle any of the issues, but the understanding is they've had zero calls in the past, I think the last two years they've been running them.
That makes me feel better. Thank you.
You should also mention that the city of Coeur d'Alene also receives $500 for their McEwen site for that, for that setting as well. I looked up what their revenue or their usage is for the Riverstone Amphitheater and the city band shell, and both of those are lower than what this fee is. So just as a comparison, you can get dedicated use of the city band shell and city park for a lower fee than this $500 represents. So that, kind of the whole marketplace, what the market will bear, I think we're right there at the top end for the facility we offer.
And Joe, just, I know it's hard to compare, but at Riverstone, I know it's not a residential neighborhood, but we received very few complaints. I can't even remember a complaint that we've received on the concerts down there. McEwen, really no complaints. City Park was a little bit different issue because you are in a residential area, but the biggest, biggest complaint we always received was the decibel level. So that's the only thing I'd like to see us have some flexibility there, not be locked in to that amount, because if it is a little bit too high for the neighborhood, I think we need some flexibility to be able to lower that decibel level somewhat to accommodate the neighborhood on that. So I don't know if that's a deal breaker for him to maybe assess that for a year and then come back.
I could definitely run it by him to see if he's willing to move that around before we bring that addendum back or the, the other contract back on the, on the 19th. That, that's something you'd like to work with or?
That's just my thought, because I know that, that is going to be the biggest complaint is the, is the, 99% are going to like it, but you're going to get, get a few people out there that, that thinks it's too loud, but it'd be nice just to kind of, because each park's going to play a little bit different. With the trees in City Park, you can muffle the decibel level a little bit, but if you don't have your mature trees, it makes it a little bit, a little bit louder at different levels. So that, that would be my only concern, is that we do have some flexibility on that.
And then I have, for, for Joe on the dollar amount, I believe it's just that one big concert where the city of Post Falls gets $3 per ticket?
Correct. If they move to a ticketed event, so if they have Ticketmaster or some other similar vendor managing their ticketing entry versus pay-at-the-gate $5 or a season pass type arrangement that they'll do for their standard concerts, if they move to that ticketed, large-scale event on those, because they're going to be bringing more people in.
So the city would make $12,000 in addition to the 500 for that one event?
Up to, correct.
Up to?
Yep.
Which could cover the whole summer, Joe? Which could cover any shortfall for the whole summer.
Any comments come forward or? I guess my other concern is the parking issue, and I'm not that aware, I haven't been out to the Tullamore Park to see, you know, where people are going to park. I know that when you think of concerts in the park, in Coeur d'Alene and McEwen, not only do they have a parking lot right there, but they also get the parking revenue from that too, so that's got to help that 500 bucks. You know, the City Park has a nice big parking lot near there. The Riverstone has a parking lot. I'm not sure, do we have a parking lot? I mean, can we accommodate even a couple hundred cars there without really having an impact on the, the neighborhood with?
So Tullamore Park has a medium-sized parking lot, as our park systems standards would be considered, roughly 40 cars in that lot. And then the two adjoining roadways are all street-side parallel parking with us. And on the west side of the park, both sides of that roadway have parallel parking with a bike lane before your traffic lane. So they're nice wide, wide roadways shifted that, that parking need off-site of the, of the actual recreation facility. So we didn't lock up 20, 30% of our park space into asphalt and stormwater treatment.
Counsel, how would counsel like to proceed? I'd much prefer to see a one-year contract, see how it all goes. They're not locked in, we're not locked in. We could, I don't know how to write the contract in such a way to say that, you know, we can give them first right of refusal on the second and third year so some other concert group can't come in and steal it away from them, but I just think there's a lot of unknowns about that, to get locked into three years and having three years of complaints and issues. I don't know, that's just my feelings.
But on the flip side, I believe Shelley mentioned that if there are issues, we can get out of the contract?
Yes.
I believe that the, that the amphitheater was probably built with something like this in mind. I'm not sure it was built with something like this weekly in mind, but I, I don't think, when, when you guys did the surveys and the amphitheater idea came about, people obviously wanted that and, I don't know, they seemed to have a good turnout at the, at the South Park, so, and I wish they'd turn that down, down there, because I can hear it at my house.
And I can see where the vendor wants the three years. These events take years to kind of build up. You know, the first year, you're not, he needs to get the word of mouth. A lot of these are word of mouth, so I think the first year, even one year is going to be hard to judge on the concept. And if we have a way to amend it or can get out of it if we're not happy with it, I'm comfortable with that. But usually these do take about three years to build a following and, and it does take a while to line your bands up on that ahead of time.
Because Steve, didn't they have that Live at Five in Coeur d'Alene, like on the corner of, like Sherman and?
Correct. Yeah, it, it started out on.
On that little corner lot?
Sixth and Sherman.
Yeah.
Sixth and Sherman, and it, it wasn't that big of an event, the first couple of years. It, it took a while to build up to the event that it is now on that. So these things do take time to get a following, get people used to going to it, and it's any concert series, just takes, takes time.
If I could, I guess, pile on that last comment, just so Counselor Wolf understands, when we first were approached, they were looking for a six-year and we weren't comfortable with that. We went down to a three-year just for that reason. We want them to be successful. We recognize that there's a risk in there, but it's a risk that we felt was reasonable. They have a good track record. We also don't want them just coming in one year, doing whatever they can to make money and then not being vested to come back the next year. So we want them doing a good job. We want them focusing on that high quality. So that's why we, we were agreeable for a three-year. We want to be a good partner with them. If they're not successful, then we have to either go find another sponsor, I have to come back to you folks asking for budgetary dollars so we can hire acts and stuff, because that's one of the issues. When you have an amphitheater, we need to program it. But we want, we wanted them to be successful and to have something to look forward to and not just getting in and getting money and getting out.
I don't disagree with that, but they've got an out. We don't have an out. I mean, we've got a small, small out, I guess, but, I mean, if they, if it's not successful for them, they just don't book it. We just don't get 500 bucks, we don't get anything. They're done. We're not, we're not locked into anything for, we're locked in for six year, or three years, they're not locked into anything really. I guess, I don't know. I'm not a fan. Well, there's motion, if someone wants to. There is no motion. If someone wants to provide direction, we take a roll call if you want to, if we're going to go with consensus and, and direct staff to bring it back, you can vote yes or no. Well, again, is it an actual motion or is it just?
Just a move to go ahead with the concept. You can either give us a consensus or if you want to do a formal motion.
Let's do a formal motion to, just so we have it on record.
I would move that we proceed with the concept of a Live After Five weekly concert series and that the staff bring back the final agreement at a future meeting.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion.
Is that going to be enough to serve your purpose?
I think there's enough information to, you know, draft up those items that I listed, plus reach out to the proponent and find out about the decibel level item, see if we can arrange some sort of flexibility in that language and bring that back.
And? Are we in discussion?
Yeah.
For me personally, I'd like to see it back on the agenda and on the consent calendar too.
Not under the consent?
Not consent calendar.
Want a new, new business?
It would be unfinished business.
Yes. Okay. Roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
No.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thanks, Brian. Appreciate it. Dave, thanks for the, listening to the input and we'll look forward to what you bring back. Next up, ordinances and resolutions, we have two ordinances, one resolution. First ordinance, Linda.
Move to place the ordinance.
Move to place the ordinance RZNE-0001-2018 on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second. Motion second, further discussion?
I have a question. This was approved in April of last year. Is there any particular reason why it's just now coming to fruition?
My understanding is that the, according to our planning manager, that the owners of the property were having issues with getting everything resolved and had a lot of stuff on their plates, and there was an illness as well, and it just didn't make it back for some reason. That's the only information that I have on that, though.
So that's on the proponent?
It was on the applicant.
Applicant?
Yep.
Thanks. Let me see, are we, roll call now?
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, Shelley, you reading it tonight?
Yes, Shannon is. An ordinance of the city of Post Falls, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for change in zoning classification for the land described in section one of this ordinance from heavy industrial HI to community commercial services CCS, providing for the amendment of the official zoning map to reflect this change, providing that all prior zones applicable to land described in section one are hereby superseded and providing an effective date.
Move to approve the ordinance RZNE-0001-2018 to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and let it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next ordinance is on the driveway slope.
Move to place the ordinance driveway slope on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes?
An ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Post Falls, Cootney County, Idaho, amending subsection 18 dot 24 dot 020 H1 to allow for driveways up to 20% slope with additional access requirements, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing severability, providing for the publication of this ordinance by summary only, and providing an effective date.
Move to approve the ordinance driveway slope and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and let it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion.
Joe? Mr. Manley's not here, the engineer's here, but the request last time was to, it's for staff to continue to look at this ordinance and see what actually the best solution would be. This was kind of a stopgap to get some people into their homes that were expecting to move in. So John Manley was not responding before.
There you go. Somebody even better than John.
I'm going to tell him you said that.
Yeah, so we decided to move forward, well, based on your guys' direction, to move forward with the 20% slope at this time, and we are evaluating the different options, and we'll be back within the next couple of months with a revised version that would include the more refined version with a lower slope design and stuff along those lines.
And this current version does include the alternate access to the front door?
It does indicate the alternate access, yes.
And as long as you're still working on the rest of it?
We are.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. And we do have one resolution?
Move to approve the resolution 2019 Personnel Policy Update.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion.
I had several questions on this, I didn't know whether this is something that we could, can we talk about that at this point in time?
Discussion.
I don't know whether it would be better handled in a workshop or?
Well, we've had this come back a couple times, right? Haven't we had this?
Presented last time was the first time we saw it.
Right, and you were supposed to take your questions to Teresa, or that was what was agreed on here prior to this meeting, and so we put the resolution.
But if Mr. Wolf's got additional concerns, is it going to cause you great consternation if we table it?
No, it's okay, I can, I'm comfortable with dealing with Teresa offline. Just some questions on verbiage and stuff, so.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. And Teresa, I'm sure we'll be in contact with you, and if you come up with any, anything you think that we should be aware, please bring it back.
Yep, thanks.
Administrator staff reports, first is USDA residential loan population threshold, and this is a follow-up of a discussion we had a few weeks ago. Linda, do you want to?
Yes, Shelley and I, and actually the mayor, have been talking about the USDA loans and the population increase in Post Falls. When the 2020 census gets published, Post Falls will no longer qualify for USDA zero-down loans because we will be over the 35,000 population that is allowable right now by USDA. Back in 2010, we went through the same process, and several of us got together and wrote to our congresspeople and USDA and several other cities, and I think it's pretty self-explanatory, it was in the packet. We would, I would ask that we go through a similar exercise again. I know Shelley is working with Crapo's office, and she can maybe give you a little update on that. But I think it's worth it to go back to the leadership and ask them to bring the population up to 50,000 threshold, the same as it is for the commercial USDA zero-down loans. A family from one to three can earn over $87,000 a year and can buy a house up to $330,000 for zero-down under this program. And in the city of Post Falls right now, we obviously have homes for 330,000. And I was just talking with the mayor tonight, and he has a new study that's out that says that the median income in Post Falls is just right over 52,000. So to me, it just seems logical to try for this, and the more people that can buy homes, I think, the healthier the environment in the city, that's just my feeling. So maybe Shelley would like to add?
I would add that I did contact Crapo's office, because in researching this, we don't have the same avenue to use until 2024, which last time it took them four years to post the census. So the timing worked out. We don't know this time when the census for 2020 would be posted. And so Senator Crapo's office has reached out to the legislative aides to find out which legislative aide needs to call me back from Washington DC to let me know if there is another method by which we could have the rural definition changed for the residential, single-family residential loan program, which currently we had redone in the 2014 Farm Bill. So we wouldn't have until 2024 if we used the same methodology. So we're trying to find out if we can do something sooner so that that change would occur prior to the 2020 census being published.
Once it gets over that level, once they publish it, if we are over the 35,000, then we, our citizens are not eligible for that financing.
Are you looking for us to say?
Continue proceeding forward to find other methods, and also letters of support on whether it's okay to have the mayor sign a letter of support to Senator Crapo's office and seek letters of support from our legislators, our local legislators for this.
Yeah. Fine by me.
Are we trying to do something before the 2024 Farm Bill?
If there is an avenue for us to do so, I will bring it back here for the council to hear.
Yep, nothing worth pursuing.
Well, the only thing is, is that the last time, the census was done in 2010, it took them till March of 2013 to put that out.
Right.
So even if it takes them a similar amount of time this time, it'd be 2023 before they make any determination. And if they do say, I mean, they might up on themselves, say, hey, let's move it to 50 grand, 50,000 people. If they don't, I think that's when we really want to attack this.
The thought was?
See if we can't get it in the Farm Bill of 2024.
Yeah, and the thought was, if, even if you send a letter prior to, you know, assuming that it's not going to take place to 2024, but if you send a letter, it's kind of forefront of the mind, at least to say, you know, we have notified you, we'll send another one then. Nothing lost, really.
As long as it's not a lot of extra work on your part.
At this point, I'm just waiting to hear back from a legislative aide, but it, I mean, it's a phone conversation or an email is what that's going to be, and I would bring that back here for you to hear on what the avenue would be.
Okay.
We do not need?
Great program, though.
We don't need an action on that one, don't need to take action on that. Any other questions on that topic? Seeing none, how about the Idaho Street to Bay Street Pedestrian Access Project? Mr. Paulus?
Honorable mayor, members of the council. That's one.
You've got pretty pictures.
Back in 2016, the city of Post Falls applied for and got a grant to construct sidewalk along Seltis Way. Tonight, I'm going to give you an update on that project, and there's no action required of you this evening, this is only a discussion item. The project is constructing a sidewalk along the north side of Seltis Way from about Idaho Street over to about Bay Street. It also has a small stretch of sidewalk being constructed on Idaho between Seltis Way and Sixth Avenue. The need for this project is driven mainly by the fact that we don't have sidewalk on either side, and there are two well-worn trails, and there are a number of people who utilize that on a regular basis. When we get adverse weather, snow piles up, or it starts to get muddy, people tend to get really close to the edge of the pavement, or in some areas, they're actually walking adjacent to or even in the travel lanes at some bad times of the day, and it can pose a safety issue. The project, since we got the grant in 2016, we've seen construction costs go up. Our overall project had an original estimate for design and construction of just under $500,000. We're now at the point where we have put together final plans, they're getting the final approval from ITDs, and then we estimate that we should be able to go out to bid on this project within the next month. Right now, the engineer's estimate on it would put the entire project about $50,000 over what the original grant amount was. What this means to us is if it goes out to bid and those dollars come in at that amount, those additional funds, about $50,000, would be the city's responsibility. The original grant had our match at 7.34%. With that additional $50,000, our match ends up being about a 10% match towards the project. Any questions that you may have at this time?
Was there a comment in there on, I can't remember if it was this or the next one, where there's a potential to visit, see if there's more grants, funds available?
We had taken a look to see if there was more grant funding available on this, and we could not find any that was available. Unfortunately, when you enter into the agreements with the state, they lock the numbers down pretty good. Usually, we try to accommodate for future growth and build in an escalation factor in this. We went into this project knowing it was going to be a tight construction cost at the beginning. Unfortunately, prices have gone up higher than we anticipated, a lot of that due to the growth that we have in the area, and contractors last year in particular were really busy. One silver lining in this is that within the cost estimate, there's about $30,000 estimated for contingency amounts in this project. Myself, I look at this as a fairly straightforward project, there's nothing from a geological standpoint that should be out of the ordinary, there aren't a lot of intersecting roads or neighboring businesses or homes to deal with. So the amount of contingency may be a little bit on the high spot. If we can manage this project properly, get a good bid, we could actually have a very little over budget on it. But that's incumbent upon staff to ride the project good if we get good bids.
If, let's say that it is 50,000 more, where do those funds come from?
We have, the budget code item, I apologize for you, I don't recognize the long number and exactly where that comes out of.
I'd say right now, it's reflecting, it's coming out of Engineering Department of General Fund.
Okay.
Other questions? And you do not need a motion, just informational?
You do not need a motion on this, and we will be back before you after the contract goes out and we receive bids, and you would have the ability to reject the contract if it comes in more than 10% over budget.
That's a good project, hopefully the numbers will come in decent. Thanks, Rob. Next item up is the Seltis Way congestion mitigation project.
I don't need to move far for this one. On, this is an update for the Seltis Congestion Mitigation Project. We were before you about four months ago with an update, showed you some pretty pictures of how construction was going on in the project. Now that the polls have gone up, and in particular, since the mast arms have gone up and the signal heads have gone up, we've received a number of questions by Facebook, email, and telephone over the past month. A lot of people asking questions as to when did this project come about, why are we putting in signals, how are they going to work, and a little bit of a concern as to how in a couple spaces do signals that close improve the situation. We thought it'd be good to update you as to where the project's at and go real briefly over the history of the project to help you, as well as the general public, know why we're doing this. So right now, for the signals, we're anticipating that the traffic signals will be energized about the end of this month. Traffic control cabinets started showing up yesterday, two out of the three that are needed showed up, we've got another one on the way. When those signals are turned on, they are going to need a calibration period. We are doing something called adaptive technology, where the signals are going to be keeping track of the number of vehicles that go through, which way they go, making turns or going straight. And they are going to think a little bit on their own so that they can respond to changing traffic patterns. And we estimate that it could take up to six months, and the contract has six months for the contractor to adapt and get that signal system fine-tuned. So the Seltis Congestion Mitigation Project, this is, what we're building now is phase two out of a three-phase project. Phase one was built a couple years ago, where on Seventh Avenue, we put in safety and capacity improvements to help handle additional traffic of people going in alternate ways to avoid the Seltis Spokane Signal. Phase two put in signals, and that's what we're doing right now, the signals at Compton and Seltis, Henry and Seltis, and then Mullen Avenue and Spokane Street. Phase three of the project, or actually, excuse me, this is still part of phase two, all these signals are interconnected with fiber optic communication, and they also connect into the existing signals from Fourth Avenue up to Seltis Spokane intersection, so that the signals will be able to share information with each other and help get the traffic through in a more efficient manner. Why is this project needed? It actually started back in 2004 with our transportation master plan that identified this as both a safety problem and, more importantly, a capacity problem in the area. Back in 2004, the average delay of a vehicle going through this corridor was under 30 seconds per vehicle during the PM peak hour. We projected back then that by 2015, we would be seeing delays in the 50 to 55 seconds per vehicle during the PM peak hour. Somehow, that worked out correctly, and we're seeing that type of delay in that area. Our current projections are that by 2028, if we do, if we did not do this project, the average delay per vehicle would be in excess of 100 seconds per vehicle. That means you could take five to 10 minutes to drive from the I-90 off-ramp in the westbound direct, excuse me, in the eastbound direction to get all the ways through Seltis and Spokane Street. Basically, it turned into a parking lot. We did a study in 2010, which was called the Seltis Congestion Mitigation Study, which came up with this solution. Phase three, which is important to work with these signals, has some minor modifications of Fifth Avenue and Sixth Avenue at the on and off ramps. In our most recent transportation master plan, we have some other alternatives to look at, which would work with the signals that we're putting in. But we're going to take a couple of years and look and fine-tune what's the best thing to have in place to work with this. This entire project by 2028, with its installation, should have the average delay instead of the 100 seconds per vehicle at the PM peak hour, the average delay should be about what it is today, less than 50 seconds per vehicle. And that's on two of the worst movements. Most of the rest of the intersections will be operating between will be operating between 20 to 35 seconds of average delay per vehicle. Technical doesn't make a lot of sense, but from a driver's standpoint, you should be getting up to that light, turns green, you should get through on that green most of the time. Sometimes you'll have to hit that red and wait through a second cycle. At 100 seconds, you're waiting three, four cycles before you can get through the intersection. Any questions?
Pressures, Rob.
I've went on because I've been watching the signal go up. So you're talking that you have six months from the time that I've been watching the signal go up on Mullen and Spokane Street because I use that.
Yeah.
Travel through there multiple times a day. So you're saying after that gets energized, turned on, then they have about six months to calibrate it?
Yes.
What are the the odds? And I was listening to what you were saying there. So if if I'm heading south and I stop at the light there by the library, the new one, are those lights going to be synced so that you aren't necessarily going to be having to stop again in that block?
Ideally, that's how there's going to work, is so that you can move through. And if you're heading southbound and you come up and you get a green at Mullen and Spokane Street, you should be able to proceed from there all the ways down to the interstate and have what transportation engineers call a green band. So you get greens all the ways through and make and make it.
Is that what that six months is, though, where you're talking about?
So when we turn them on, they have a program in there. That program's based upon our best shot at current traffic conditions as to how to move traffic through. The day they turn them on, they start collecting data. The consultant and has a firm, they're out of Fort, not Fort Collins, but Colorado Springs, Colorado, where they're going to be able to monitor the signals while they're in operation, and they're going to be doing changes to those signal programming as on a week-to-week basis.
Perfect. I was just anticipating emails and phone calls.
Yes, we I'm anticipating that we will get some emails and phone calls when they first go on, and there will be things which those calls are actually very important to us because that helps us identify where some of the weaknesses are. Unfortunately, we don't have enough staff, and I don't think many people want to go out there and sit and watch a traffic signal for three to four hours a day to try to figure out what the problems are. We can get a lot of it through the cameras and the radar detectors that we're putting out there, but people calling in and giving us their perspective as to what's working and what doesn't helps us even more.
Well, I appreciate you explaining that because then when we have the information, we are also out there and being asked those questions. So thank you.
So if you get those questions and if you get complaints, forward them on to me, and I'd be glad to respond to those individuals. But take that information and help get those signals working better.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I just have a comment. I I thought when you guys put the light out here, that that was a goofy idea, and it's turned out to be a great idea. So I got full faith in you guys to to make it work right. Just a little pressure, Rob.
I like the pressure. It's something to strive to achieve.
Thanks, Rob.
You're welcome.
Next up, mayor comments, and I want to thank Paul Kenny and your crew. I know we haven't had too much snow, but I have received not complaints necessarily, but questions, and I forward them on to Paul, and he responds. And I know he's he's addressing several questions as they come up. You know, when we explained that we're going with snow gates, that it was going to take longer to plow the streets. And, you know, people didn't like the snow berms, and it was easier to plow the street quicker to plow the streets and leave snow berms. Now we're not doing that, and it takes longer. So it's give and take. But I know I have had a couple of emails and phone calls, and I've forwarded them on to Paul, and they've been responded in a very timely basis. So I appreciate that, Paul. Thanks to you and to your folks out running those big pieces of equipment. That makes life easier. And then I'd also like to, I was out of town, but I would like to congratulate all those that were award winners or recipients of the at the recognition, excuse me, banquet chamber a week ago. It's some very well-deserving folks and organizations were recognized, and I just want to extend my congratulations on to them. Roads are, I don't know what the roads are right now. I think Paul's going to plow us all out if we need to, but with cold weather and the slick roads as they come about, please drive carefully. And remember, we have little ones going to and from school. So with that, council comments.
In the the snow plowing theme, I have to, I want people to know that they do not play favorites with us. I was on the far end of having my street plowed, and I was okay with that because I didn't need to go anywhere. But when the snow plows came, it was so awesome not to have a berm in the driveway. And I was so excited to see the snow plow coming down the street, and I looked out the window, and he stopped right in front of my house. And I'm like, no, don't stop. Keep going, keep going. He got out. Evidently, my newspaper had slipped out of the box. He got out, and I don't want him to get in trouble for this because it was awesome, got out and picked the paper up, put it back in my box, got back in his plow and and carried on. And I thought, that was really unexpected customer service. But I did want you to know that, yeah, they aren't playing favorites. We're we're all we're all in this together. And I did get my road plowed, and I didn't have a berm. So yay, winter and the snow plow team.
Anybody else? We do not need an executive session tonight?
We do not.
The next motion is?
Adjourned.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned. Thank you.